One. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Board of Education Regular Meeting, June eighth, two thousand and twenty. This meeting is streamed live. Just want to say that the Board of Education will meet remotely in accordance with Section Six of the Illinois Executive Order issued March sixteenth, two thousand and twenty. Can I have a roll call, please?
Law Day.
Here.
Livingston.
Here.
Monzel. Sorry, here. Parsons.
Here.
Rolowitz.
Here.
Teterich.
Here.
Savage Williams.
Here. Thank you. The first item on the agenda is written communication. Dr. Beavis, do we have any written communication?
We have no written communication this evening.
Okay, thank you. The next item is comments from the public. Public comments were due at five thirty today. Were there any public comments submitted, Dr. Beavis?
We have no public comments this evening.
Okay, thank you. The next item is FOIA, and we do have one FOIA in our packet. Any questions about this? Dr. Beavis, is there anything more you'd like to say about this?
No, it's the letters in your packet.
Okay, great. All right, so we're already at information items. The first item is the ASBO International's Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting based on fiscal year two thousand and nineteen. The CAFTRA. Who's going to tell us a little bit about this?
I am. So, Ford, because we now get this award annually, I just don't want anybody to take this lightly. This is the ASBO, Association of School Business Officials. It's the international organization that established this Award of Excellence for financial reporting, and it is truly a gold standard in the school business. To give you an idea, sixty school districts in Illinois out of eight hundred and seventy-nine have qualified to receive this this year. Only sixty over eight hundred have not received this award. This is a big deal, and I just want to stress it. The award has been given now for more than forty years. We first earned it about, I don't think it says here, but basically thirteen years ago, and we have earned it every year since. And I just think it is a real credit that ETHS has been meeting the standards for transparency in budgeting, in financial management, and in meeting the highest standards in financial accounting. So, to Mary and our whole business team, huge congratulations, and every year I just get such pleasure out of bringing this forward again. You never want to counter chickens, but we are determined that we will continue to bring this to you year after year. We know how important it is to meet these high standards. So, once again, I'll show it, and there it is. And a big shout out to everybody associated with earning this award.
Mary, congratulations. To you, this is amazing. Just amazing.
Thanks, Eric.
And certainly, I appreciate your words, Eric, not to be taken for granted. This is a huge honor for our district. And needless to say, I mean, we always need you, but we especially need you in this season. So, I hope you pass on to your staff, you know, this isn't something to take for granted. This takes a lot of hard work. So, I hope you pass on to your staff how much we appreciate this.
I will. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
And by the way, Kendra is at home with her new baby. She had a baby a week ago.
Oh, congratulations.
She got her little boy, so otherwise she probably would have tuned in and accepted the award with me. The annual report is really hers now. I passed that torch when Bill passed the torch to me. So, I certainly am there to help guide her, but this has become her other baby.
Her other baby. Yeah.
Well, thank you. Everybody's doing well. They're all good.
Good. That's great. Thank you. Congratulations to Eric for me. All right, super. All right, our next item is the discussion on COVID nineteen and the impact on ETHS.
Yes, and I'll begin this, although my team and I are going to all contribute to this discussion. It goes without saying, and anybody tuning in and anybody with a pulse in this country knows that we have been dealing mightily with the pandemic now for months, and clearly it has had a big impact on schools. We, March thirteenth was the last day that ETHS was in session here at the school, and we're not that far from now, June thirteenth. And it's been a lot for us as well as every school district to figure out. But what we'd like to do tonight is talk about the impact then that COVID is having on the school district and the kind of things that we have to start, not start, but be thinking about as we even anticipate how a fall opening might look, and the fact that the board needs to be very much engaged in these discussions. We received just last week the updated summer school and other allowable activities. And this is, there was guidance given originally, Part One, to schools when we started all of the COVID school closures and everything. Now, Part Two is as we enter Phase Three of the, what's it called? Back to Normal Governor's Orders. And we probably, based on the projections, will be in Phase Four by the time the school year rolls around. But these are very instructive directions. And the reason I say that is what we have been led to understand is basically everything in this will be part of the guidelines for any kind of phase four reopening. Other than right now, we, all of Illinois, but schools are limited to gatherings of no more than ten people. And what we understand, and by the way, when you look at the reopening, phases one through five, you can read it yourself. It's been out there quite widely, that Phase Four would allow groups of fifty or more to be in one setting. So, other than this would probably in Phase Four go up to fifty or more, we can anticipate that pretty much every requirement in this is going to continue. Now, I say that for a reason, because I just sat down and jotted down today some of the key directives in that reopening plan. I have jotted down sixty-four just from that one plan alone. Sixty-four things that I jotted down that schools are going to need to be able to assure and demonstrate that they are ready to reopen in person. Now, as you know, there's nothing more important in our means than having an in-person opening. As Dr. Beavis has said before, schools were designed for in-person education. It's our delivery system because we know that it is the best delivery system. When teachers and staff and students can be together, interacting, have a full-blown integrated experience with one another, students can work together in teams, they can work together with their teachers, they can have different kinds of activities and all sorts of relationship-building and well-being activities that are so important as part of the educational environment. We know how important that is. But we also know from these guidelines that we are going to be directed to accomplish a lot of things if we can assure that bringing people back in this building in just a matter of weeks is indeed going to assure their safety and their health. So, what I thought I would do, I'm not going to read all sixty-four to you, but I would like to give you some idea of the kind of things that will be required. There are things like social distancing, the six feet separation, the PPE, so that we have the protective equipment, face coverings, symptom and temperature checks daily before anybody enters the school, cleaning and sanitizing the building regularly, and all employees being trained in health and safety protocols. That if we do have a sick person discovered in the school, that we must close off that area used by the sick person, anywhere that the person came into contact with, for proper cleaning and disinfecting before anybody else would be allowed back into that area. So, have to be quite a bit of coordination for that. That we are advised that if somebody has been sick, that we wait at least twenty-four hours before even beginning cleaning and disinfecting that area. So, obviously, if we have a student who'd been to three classrooms that morning and walked down a certain hallway or whatever, we have to now abandon all those areas and wait twenty-four hours before we can start cleaning and disinfecting the areas. We need to pay special attention that all students understand how to put on and remove face coverings, such as for when they would need to be eating, because the face covering, once you've worn it, it's considered contaminated on the exterior part. So, if you don't take it off and on properly for eating, you could be passing on more contamination. And we would have to make sure that, I'll start using a number for you here. We have about, let's say, thirty-seven to thirty-eight hundred students, and we have, let's say, six hundred employees. So, you know, we're talking about in the range of forty-three hundred people every day that this building is needing to serve. We've been, it's been recommended that we would put down tape or other indicators throughout the school that would be indicating the safe distance of six feet, that we would have one-way hallways, one-way stairwells, that we would have staggered schedules for arrivals and dismissals, staggered schedules for passing periods in the halls, staggered schedules for mealtime, and staggered schedules for bathroom breaks. So that we would monitor that a very limited people could go into any restroom in this school at the same time during the day. We would need to maintain the six-foot social distancing during instructional times, specialized classes, mealtimes. We don't have recess here, but I'll get to PE in a minute, extracurricular activities, and in transportation. We would need to be frequently throughout the day cleaning all touch surfaces such as door handles, knobs, desktops, tabletops, countertops, light switches, pencil sharpeners, keyboards, hands-on learning items, sinks, faucets, and then buses and vans. We would need to document the cleaning schedules every day. This is interesting. We would need to assign for our high school students seating would need to be assigned, and students would be required to remain in their seats to the greatest extent of the time. We would need to develop a marked path to travel inside each classroom and rearrange desks so that the desks are six feet apart on all sides. You're six feet from the person on your right, you're six feet from the person on your left, you're six feet from the person ahead of you, and you're six feet from the person behind you. And everybody would have to face forward and remain in their assigned seats to the greatest extent possible. We would need to, let's see, I got the marked path, so when you enter the classroom, you would be given an assigned marked path in each classroom, how you enter and go in and get seated, and how you lead that. There would be no shared objects, so whether this would be labs, or PE, or just needing a pen, there would be no shared objects. Music programs, since they are considered highly dangerous in transmission, would take a lot of extra precaution. Indoor rehearsals would be discouraged. We'd be considered to do all music-related courses outside. Band members would only remove masks when they're playing their, it says, remove mask when only necessary, but I don't know how you play a trombone and don't remove your mask. But the conductors, the teachers, would have to be ten feet away from the first row in music, and virtual rehearsals would be recommended whenever possible. They are recommending that every bathroom have a bathroom monitor to monitor how many people are going in and only let people in as somebody comes out. So, that would be, we would be asked to remove all furniture and other items that might encourage congregating in like public or certain areas. So, we would certainly get all the furniture out of the main lobby. We'd have to block off in Entrance Three where we built that nice area for students to sit and wait and everything. We would need to block that out because you're encouraged not to have any area that people could congregate. This is an interesting one. They recommend, it says, quote, suspend the use of lockers if possible. And if students are using lockers, stagger their locker times so that there would always be six-foot distancing between students at the lockers that they don't want students to use. Let's just, I got five or six more here that I want to mention. That it's recommended that students would probably eat in their classrooms and at the tables that are six feet apart. But once they're done eating in that classroom, then the room should be disinfected after eating prior to resuming classroom activities. So, apparently, we would bring the meals to the room. The students would sit individually facing forward and eat, and then we would have to somehow empty the room and disinfect it before we could continue the classes in that room. To limit all nonessential visitors, volunteers, any activities, external groups, anything like that. That any discipline meetings, IEP and Bible Four meetings, meetings between staff and families should be done remotely. So, I guess we need to set the deans up with some kind of a virtual interaction with the students. This one's going to get a little dicey since we use the CTA, but bus drivers would be required to wear masks, and the CDC recommends social distancing on buses. At the example they give, seat one child per row and skip rows. So, I don't know if we could get the CTA, and then clean, sanitize the bus between every trip. So, I don't know if we could get the CTA to use one person a row, every other row, and sanitize. But that's, again, this is what schools are told that we need to do if we're going to reopen. And maybe just a couple of things. And in physical education, they're recommending that there be no shared equipment, so you'd have no balls, bats, whatever. That you eliminate the need for locker rooms. You have no locker, no changing areas or use of lockers in PE areas, no showers. And I think this was more of an elementary school, but students would need to change their shoes in their classroom prior to arrival in physical education. And physical education should be outdoors whenever possible, weather permitting. Now, the reason I share just some of those sixty-four things with you that are out of the guidelines that are published by the Illinois State Board of Education and the Illinois Department of Public Health is this is not simple stuff, folks. And we definitely want to figure out how to get our kids back. But the guidelines, the demands that are being put on schools that you are supposed to meet in order to do that are just simply astronomical. So, I'm going to turn it over at first to Pete, because one of the things we have come to understand is, and you saw my letter that I sent to the community about, you know, we could be all-in, all-on virtual learning. We might have staggered shifts. We might have a hybrid model, pointing out that, you know, we're still trying to figure out what might work. But one of the things that we're convinced is that some component of this is going to require e-learning. Even if you had brought people in in shifts, what do you do with the people who aren't in school that day? And so, the fact that there's, you know, or let's say that we have an outbreak in the school. We have to close the school on a minute's notice. We have to, I just will predict that e-learning is going to have to be some component of whatever the delivery system is next year. And so, Pete, why don't I turn it over to you, and you talk a little bit about what we're working on, because we believe that if that's the case, e-learning has to be way better. We really, without being humble about it, think that we probably did better than most schools in the state or the country, but that doesn't mean that we're satisfied with how it all went. And so, we're already gearing up that any e-learning component has to be better. So, Pete, why don't you jump in, and then Marcus, I want you to talk a little bit about the team that Pete's on it, but the team you have going, to try to work through all of these requirements and see what we would be able to do and how we'd be able to do it, and what literally is impossible as well. And of course, Mary has been working heavily on a lot of this as well. But to Pete and to Marcus, and then we'll start responding to some questions and just thoughts that you as board members have.
Yeah, you know, to Eric's point, we do know there are a lot of, there's a lot of uncertainty, right, when you plan for this? You know, we still don't know the course that the coronavirus is going to take. You know, I read that planning amid COVID nineteen is like nailing Jell-O to the wall. And, but the one thing we do know is that e-learning will play a part of it. It's going to play a part of it whether we go back fully and, let's say, let's imagine a scenario where everyone can come back and there's no guidelines. It's school as usual. To a hybrid model, to we start with e-learning, to we're interrupted. Just this past weekend, The New York Times had an op-ed piece, their editorial board put out, How to Reopen Schools? And they had a statistic, there was a poll done by USA Today that said six in ten parents are likely to continue home learning in the fall. So, that was a national poll. So, we do know that e-learning is going to play a significant role. So, we're planning for e-learning. We've dedicated professional, we have mandatory professional development this summer that includes planning as part of it. We're paying our teachers to participate in the professional learning, and those professional learning modules for e-learning translate into actionable and observable tasks so that folks can adjust their course expectations. We're going to have requirements on Zooming with our students. We're elevating well-being and connection to our students. We're doing work on assessment. But, you know, I don't want to lose sight of the fact that our teachers did an amazing job in pivoting in real time, managing whatever was going on in their home life with whatever the effects were of quarantine. They did a phenomenal job. But we've learned, we've learned the value of connecting with students regularly. We've learned the value of having routines within the classroom and within a course when you go online. And we have an amazing support team, amazing tech team that has supported our growth and development and is working on all of those modules in conjunction with hearing and getting feedback from teachers, getting feedback from our students. We're going to work on community building, communicating expectations not only to our teachers but to our families and to our students, routinizing a schedule, normalizing Zooms, making those routine in the classroom when they're remote, having a weekly structure to our courses because predictability is so, so important. We've learned that. And finally, to provide students with feedback beyond grades. Some of the greatest successes we had was in harnessing the online learning to really provide feedback, whether it was comments in the margins on using Google Documents or video, quick video sort of conferences with students. We're going to leverage all of that as we prepare. The other thing is we're going to go to a, use Google Classroom as our learning platform, our learning for all teachers, so that it's a one-stop shop for families and students. They don't have to navigate multiple platforms in terms of delivering instruction. That's really, really important. Again, goes to, we're simplifying and going deeper, I think, is the key message here. And, you know, the reality is, you know, that if we are, when we do return in this situation, that we really have always, and as an educator, have always, you know, believed that a classroom needs to be a safe space for learning. We always talk about that, intellectually safe space, space for students to explore their identity. And now we have to go into, is it a healthy space? And that causes a lot of issues in terms of, that's compromised by one sneeze or a cough. Whether a person has COVID nineteen or not, a student or a teacher coughs, sneezes in a classroom, and everyone kind of does that gut check, right? Because we've all seen the statistics in a closed room, how that spreads. So, we do know that we'll be online at some time, and we're preparing rigorously for that this summer. We're also going to provide support again throughout the school year for that. We're preparing to go on full semester. That was, that's why I tasked the faculty with, I was like, we are in our IT. We are preparing for a full semester online. Whether or not we have to use it, hoping we don't have to use it to that extent, but that positions us extraordinarily well to manage the hybrid, to manage the in and out and every other option therein. I'm also serving on, I serve with, you know, Marcus Campbell, Dr. Campbell over here has created a Fall Learning Task Force, which I had one of the committees, but he has a multi-committee approach. So, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Campbell to provide a little bit of overview on that.
Thanks, Pete. So, navigating the COVID nineteen world and a large comprehensive high school is no small matter. Just listening to some of the things that Eric has already brought to the surface are things that we've been talking through and thinking about. A couple of weeks ago, well, more than that, we've been thinking about how do we reopen in the fall for quite some time. And what we've done is we've organized ourselves with these big buckets, like what are the thinking? What are the considerations that have to be lifted and answered as students and staff consider, as we consider this opening? One of the things as we have is a group working on the teaching and learning, which is Pete, Dr. Beavis, and Scott Bramley working on that. We have a staff considerations, where HR is working on that. We have student procedures, our student services, and our special education staff are working on that. We have operational and purchasing things, and we have We have folks from Mary's office and Robbie Brown and Keith Robinson working on that. We have our union involved, we have students involved, and this is quite the undertaking. Just to think of cafeterias, for example. Scott Bramley, we manage our cafeterias and we balance them to where they, we are at the max. There's no room for social distancing in our cafeterias. What do we do about lunch? Even if we were to spread lunch over several periods, we certainly really wouldn't have, want kids eating so early in the morning or have kids eating so late in the afternoon. Even if we were to have run lunch nine periods a day in all four cafeterias, that's just not an ideal scenario. So we have to think about these kinds of things. Also, Eric mentioned the buses. Our buses are packed to the max every day, the CTA buses. How do we, how do we work with the CTA to make sure that the kids are safe on the buses? We also have considerations around kids who have compromised immunity, staff who have compromised immunity and their fear of coming back and what does it look like for a student who just doesn't want to step foot in ETHS in the fall? And what does it mean for a staff member who doesn't want to come to ETHS in the fall because of all of the things that we're mentioning here? So it's quite the undertaking. We had a meeting just last week, just to have some philosophical discussion before we got to the logistical things around the fall distribution of materials. How do we get kids their books and their Chromebooks and their art materials and their CTE materials? And we were, we're hours of conversation and just to be able to do it safely for both students and staff. We think we've come to some agreements, we've come to some philosophical agreements on what we want to do, but the implementation of those procedures is the next step in the process. So there's a lot to do. Some of it seems, you know, just to be quite frank, really impossible for us. And so we're just going to have to, you know, raise those issues when we get them and recognize that there's a level of discomfort that is, that is out there that we may not be able to meet because we just don't have the space to do it. Being so large and being so, such a complex facility, it's just very, very, very tough. But we're going to do our best to be prepared for whatever situation that we are faced with in the fall. And I think, sorry, somebody's going out the front door. And I think Mary, Mary's got a few things that she's going to share as well.
Yeah, I don't have a lot to add because of course you guys all know that I'm coming at it from the money side. I'm not an educator by trade, so I don't try to tell these guys how it's best to educate kids. But clearly, all of the things that were mentioned are going to change the financial aspects. And we know that the salaries for anyone working remotely don't go away. We also know that the guidelines are calling for what would probably be increased staffing monitoring levels. So I don't know, can someone who's not working remotely be redeployed to be a hall monitor, a bathroom monitor, a cafeteria monitor? You know, unfortunately, you know, making sure things like not, not too many students are using a bathroom at once, but also making sure that students aren't having physical contact that could be as simple as a hug. You know, it's difficult to monitor some of these things and a lot of these things do take increased staffing. So I think that's, you know, in the back of my mind, things that I've mentioned back and forth with TOEY a little bit, could staff be redeployed if needed? But just thinking, you know, I'll just comment on, for example, the classroom spacing. If you think about the size of a classroom, and we're fortunate not to have huge class sizes, but if, at least during the early stage, you take that down to 10 students who have to be spaced six feet apart, and even in the later stages, you can't really fit many more than that if you can even fit 10 six feet apart. So I don't know, it would probably require some additional furniture modifications possibly, but really just thinking about the classroom spacing clearly requires more space. And while I do think that everyone has gotten accustomed to sort of claiming space in ETHS and we all wonder, how did they ever fit 5,500 kids in our building? When you'd think we don't have any space for the 3,700, 3,800 that we have now? I do think it changes the layout enough to really be a difficult puzzle to figure out. One of our architecture, we have two architects that have been certified to work on projects with us, and one of them has told me that they are currently helping some schools figure out the logistical pieces of, you know, how do you place those pieces in the puzzle? For example, the students in the room, you know, not reusing, Marcus mentioned, I think it was Marcus who mentioned, maybe Eric, kids eating in the classroom and then Eric mentioned the room had to be disinfected afterwards. So the puzzle in that part is, okay, 10 students in a classroom, they're going to eat lunch in a certain class because it's their time, and then they're all going to leave and go to a different class and we're going to disinfect that room, but that takes that room out of commission for the next period. And so then it becomes not only a student scheduling piece, but also, you know, a custodial scheduling piece and a class scheduling piece, that all those pieces have to fit together. So I know there's learning loss remotely. I've read a lot of the articles, some of you have even forwarded some articles that Eric has forwarded to us. And so I think we all have the same goal, but figuring out how to accomplish that is not only a logistical puzzle, but also one that will have financial implications too. So I'm sort of taking the lead from the three people who just spoke before me, and then it's my job to figure out how to pay for it and how to then tighten everything else so that we can pay for it. So that's what I'll do when we're ready.
So that's a lot to take in. And I know that that's only the beginning because this is huge. Forward, questions? Gretchen?
I'm trying to get better at unmuting myself. Finally figured out how to use the spacer bar. So a couple of questions, comments, no particular order. So let me just toss a couple out there. I don't want to, sure other people have something to ask about as well. First of all, you know, I just want to say, I think Eric, maybe you touched on it, but I don't want to lose sight of our equity focus. And I want to talk, or I'd love to hear from you, I don't want to talk about your thoughts on looking at all of this through the equity lens and how we, at a school board level, you know, I find it absolutely terrifying and fascinating at the same time, all this crazy stuff that we're going to have to do if we think we're going to get back together in person while at the same time totally preparing for online work. But all of that sort of, it's a much bigger crisis for students who are already struggling and particularly black, brown students, all of that. And I, it's been actually, I think, really heartening to read some of these articles you've referred to, some of which I've sent and others are floating around, who do hone in on this equity issue. Although I have to say, nobody seems to have a really good way to address it. So maybe you could just touch on that quickly. I have several other things, but I can come back to that.
Yeah, I'll be glad to speak to that a little bit. First of all, a lot of the, and there are equity issues. I want to begin by acknowledging that and I'm going to come back to that. But a lot of what we've been reading about is actually a national problem and not an ETHS problem. It's basically the digital divide. There are, you know, underfunded schools and children in underfunded schools, they don't have access to technology, they don't have a device, they don't have connectivity. Those would be the two big ones. We have actually solved that. Every student in this school has a device and any student in this school who did not have connectivity, we have purchased hundreds of hotspots. We get them out to students and, and so one of the main things that has caused a lot of inequity is students from underfunded schools just haven't had this possible. That said, what we really want to be examining is what students have not been going online? What students have been disconnected from the school? What students, are we just concerned, been struggling with their work? You know, they didn't have the kind of face-to-face support that would be so vitally necessary. So one of the things that I envision, and this is just an example, that we could possibly have what I would call a soft start, that we might start with an e-learning model. But we could then start bringing aspects online very steadily. So for example, if we have students who are not connecting, they need to come in here and we might not be able to handle 3,700, but we could handle 250, for example. Students who need extra help with our system supports or tutoring. So maybe we can't bring 3,700 in, but maybe we can bring 310 in and set up in very small spaces, meeting all those guidelines of disinfecting and masks and facing the same direction and all that, and provide them with that basically one-on-one or very small group assistance. Students who need a certain kind of hands-on experiences that we can't do virtually, but we can schedule them in to provide that kind of extra assistance. So one thing that I would envision, I'm not suggesting we would have to start with an e-learning model, but maybe in order to meet all those guidelines, we would begin that way and then start identifying ways, maybe two days a week, maybe five days a week for some students. How do we then get them, get them in a different setting here in the school while we can still, you know, do our very best to avoid infection? And that would be not only for the students, but, but, you know, for all the adults in the building who would have underlying conditions. So those are the kind of things we're thinking about. The other thing we're going to very much do is, is be very sophisticated monitoring, and I'm sticking with e-learning because it's kind of embedded in your question, you know, there are some real equity issues for me because we haven't been able to get kids in school. And so if I stick with that thinking for a moment, one of the things we're going to have to become very sophisticated at, and we were only fair at this, to be honest, this spring, monitoring daily who's not showing up and what's the demographic? What is their profile? What do we already know about them? What do they need? And literally just throwing resources and personnel at it immediately. I want to give a shout out to our folks. We had so many teachers contacting kids individually and really working on that. But I think that we would need a more systematic approach and a more sophisticated approach to make sure nobody is slipping between the cracks.
I have a couple of questions, but somebody else should go first.
I just want to jump in. Eric started by saying that this is not just an ETHS problem, that this is a societal problem and COVID has presented a huge issue, especially with, just across the globe and within the black and brown community. I am concerned how, how do I say this? So if... The other issue I think we have to deal with or may have to face is if District 65 is not as ready as we are. Because then I'm concerned about those high schoolers that have to take care of their siblings. And parents that are essential that must work, but also even if the parent is home or there's a guardian home, not all of them are able to log on and help. And so I've heard, I know that there are older siblings taking care and helping, or who took care and also helped the homework process or the e-learning process with their younger siblings while trying to do their high school work. And so that's a system, and I will continue to say that it's an Evanston issue. It's an Evanston community issue that requires all of us, not just the school board, to act in a silo of taking care of ETHS, but it's a community issue that requires a response from the entire community. And the sooner we get away from our titles and what we've been elected to do and know that this will require a community response, and it requires a response from a GOY MCA. I am not, you know, pulling myself out of it. We are responsible for figuring this complete thing out. If Evanston Township does exactly everything that Eric listed and District 65 doesn't, there is a ripple effect that is bound to happen with our students that are at Evanston Township. So if we open up and District 65 doesn't, and I have no idea what their plans are, I'm hopeful that they're getting ready too. So I'm not putting this on them. But, you know, or if we open up our community and there's e-learning at home and families or parents are working because they have to, there's a ripple effect. And I guess that's all I'm trying to say, that it's not just one piece of the puzzle that needs to be fixed. It's how do we do this across the community, make sure that we are responding, if we're talking equity, that we are responding to the issues of equity that exist in Evanston.
Monique, glad you said that, Monique. It's clear that we have to work in conjunction with District 65 and other agencies in Evanston. We, but we really have to look at District 65. So I don't know, Pete, you mentioned some of the committees that are working and I'm sure there are many, but is there a group that's articulating with District 65? Peter, Marcus?
I do know that District 65, because, you know, we're trying to work and do some things for the youth in the community during the summer months, but they are working, they are trying, they are trying. So I am not putting this on them. I'm just saying that our school systems have a heavy lift, both 65 and 202, in order to do this, in order to get every, all students back into the building. And if as a community, we think that they will resolve the issue, we will, yeah, we won't be successful as a community. And so I know everybody's trying to figure this out and it is very hard, just as much as effort that we're putting into what it looks like to reopen, we're also planning for what it may be to close again.
Right.
At the same time.
Right.
So that is, that is the, that's the challenge. And I just, I don't know how you do it. I did write it down, that planning, reopening and implementing is like nailing Jell-O to a wall. Because that's the, that's the perfect example of what it feels like. Yeah.
I will say, I know District 65 has working groups and they invited us to have a liaison to their working groups and Scott Bramley is doing that. And I really appreciated that. And I know Marcus and Pete are looking for ways to create that bridge from their, back to our working groups and, and, and we're really, like, they are kind of, just kind of getting revved up on this and, you know, getting assignments out on it and everything.
Yeah.
Remember, we didn't have these guidelines till last week. And so I think everybody's revving up, but you are right, Monique, and I like that you say, this is a community concern. And, you know, and whether you're, whether you're attending ETHS or any other school in the community, you're all our kids. And we really do have, I think, real, I think a community response is whatever happens here, because it's Because it's going to be, it's not going to be like it was. And, and, and even if we've got in-person, you know, only some of the kids are coming every day. I, I, I mean, there's no way we can meet those guidelines with forty-three hundred people in this building. It is impossible. I mean, there aren't enough six feet in every direction from every human being in this school to do that. And so, so you're exactly right. And, and, and even that, think, think about how the turmoil that creates. Uh, you know, you're sending your high schooler on Monday and Wednesday. Your high schooler's not coming, you know? But maybe you're sending one of your high schoolers, your, your senior on Monday and Wednesday. But, but maybe your, your freshman is coming on Tuesday and Friday. I mean, and, and that doesn't even count the elementary schools. So you are a hundred percent right. The community impact is, is just huge.
And you know, Eric, you make a really good point, um, that I didn't want to lead in with, but the guidance that we've gotten from the Illinois Department, well, the Illinois State Board of Ed and conjunction with Department of Health. And I don't want to, you know, beat up on agencies that are also trying to do their best in this time, but it hasn't exactly been super timely. Um, and I've certainly heard some criticism through the EdRed world, our, our local school advocacy organization about how, um, how it was almost absurd to think that the summer school guidance document comes out as school is letting out, summer school is theoretically beginning in a way that makes it almost completely useless a, as far as summer school is concerned. I mean, it's just, it, it's too late, uh, to actually act on or implement in any meaningful way. So I, I, I'll relieve you of the obligation of, of being a little critical of our statewide leaders in this regard. Because I think really you, as, as our, our local team, our local administrators, and as Monique has pointed out, our local not-for-profit community and everybody else here in Evanston is really doing the hard work of trying to figure it out.
And thank you for pointing that out. And let's say we get the, you know, so supposedly the, the phase four instructions will come in July. And we're scheduled to start like, you know, the, the, the end of the third week of August. In, in my mind, that's one of the reasons I am really leaning towards what I call the soft start. Start with e-learning and then start building it in. How much time are we going to have with, with those instructions to, to, to even make any headway on, on, on what's going to be meaningful education? So, but thank you for pointing that out. It, it's just, I know that they're, they're, they're struggling too. But, but you're right, the summer school guidance was useless in terms of summer school.
I have a philosophical comment, I guess. You know, it also seems to be a matter of perspective and how you choose to approach this problem. Where you can think about the narrative, the conventional narrative that e-learning, remote learning, online learning is necessarily subpar and necessarily below grade, you know, standard. That it's something less than in-person learning. But you can also treat this as an opportunity to, you know, be groundbreaking and be thought leaders and to be really forward-thinking. Because the reality is we're not going back. We are only going forward. And how do we innovate through this? And how do we, how do we make this something that people can value and be proud of? And, um, you know, maybe there is something to be said for all of these previous conversations where we sort of are on the treadmill of dealing with these persistent problems over and over again. And some, suddenly something like this disrupts all of that and gives us a chance to pay attention to students in a new way, in a way that the old systems and the old ways of doing things didn't, you know, allow us to do. Maybe created, you know, situations where students were overlooked and students were passed over. And now all of a sudden, we have to isolate, you know, two hundred, three hundred students in a different way. Because the ways that we were reaching them, we weren't reaching them before. And now we can reach them potentially because we're forced into this new paradigm. So, you know, I think, I think there's a little bit of head in the sand. I mean, I'm speaking from sort of a Northwestern perspective and a higher education perspective. You know, with the ways universities are postponing decisions. You know, like we're never going to get, we don't, you know, like as if we keep postponing, that bridge will just get farther and farther away and we'll never have to deal with it. But we have to deal with it and we may as well embrace it and make it the best it can possibly be. And, you know, utilize all the experts we have in our community. We have a tremendously gifted community. And, you know, of teachers and professionals and all the community leaders and, you know. So some of that is, I think, giving voice to that and, and, and embracing the opportunities that we have here. So.
You know, Stephanie, if I may just lift that up and kind of repeat what you said, because it, it actually filled my heart listening to what you just said, to, to be perfectly honest. The idea, first of all, that the old normal wasn't so good anyway. Let, let's really do try to think what the new normal can look like. And I appreciate it when you said, you know, and we don't have to start with the assumption that e-learning is bad. If we start with the assumption that e-learning can be really superior, now how do we recraft our education around? But, but, you know, equity is providing what people need, not giving everybody the same dose of, of, of whatever we've been doing. And, and, and so thank you for, for, for pointing that. I'm only repeating what you said because I love it so much. But thank you for pointing out. And, but, you know, but then if we have three hundred and twelve students that we need to get in here to, to, to give, uh, some other kind of attention, uh, but nobody's being ignored. Uh, if, if we can really do a quality e-learning, I, I think over time we could really develop something here. So I gotta tell you, thank you for saying that. And, and, and if you will, giving us permission to think differently about how do we do this? Because what bothers me about all those guidelines, is that really going to be better education? So we bring ten in now and we send kids with a bag, uh, to eat in a certain area and, 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 and we can't have any group learning because nobody, nobody could face their desks together. Uh, and, and, and so we can't have teams doing anything anymore. I'm, I, I keep thinking, so just because we make it work, I, I, I mean, from a technical point of view, is it really good education? And, 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 and I've been very bothered by that. So I'm sorry, I, I didn't say anything you didn't say, except thank you.
And I, I'd like to add to that. Stephanie, you're absolutely right. Last Friday, maybe two Fridays ago, uh, our instructional technology team put together, uh, a virtual conference. Uh, we call it Chrome Camp. We host it every year. And I was so proud of the innovation and the out-of-the-box thinking of our instructional technology team and our teachers. And I just want to share a couple of the sessions that were run that day. And that is making the most of online teaching, building community, designing and, uh, executing mindfulness. Four ways to keep e-learning fresh, presenting projects via Zoom. You, you can Google classrooms to create community. Pete did a workshop on, on, on assessment and remote learning. There was a, a, a session on Screencastify and how to make it fly. Making e-learning work, putting humanity first, uh, effective digital feedback. I mean, our teachers were really, really like, and these were in-house. We didn't, no one was hired from the outside. These were our teachers sharing best practice, uh, during this time for e-learning. And it was just music to my soul to see so much innovation taking place, uh, with our teachers.
You know, to that point, Marcus, of the session I ran, everyone pointed out that they made, they didn't just make the best of it. They found that some of the constraints were actually liberating, particularly around grading. It made them rethink how they grade students. When we took the F away and it was that you could only give it incomplete because that shifted the, uh, the, the, the burden of the failure from the student back to the teacher with the incomplete. So people reconceptualize really how they graded, how they provided feedback. And it was, it was, it, it was pretty incredible. I had about sixteen, seventeen people and they were all talking about the value of, of, of feedback, how they gave feedback. And again, the absence of that, that failing grade and setting the lowest grade you could get in the grade book. Putting a, putting a floor on, uh, on grades where you couldn't give zeros. So you had to like, you know, really think about your assignments, your assessments. It really did grow people in a way that we could never have done through just professional development. So the situation led to growth. And actually leveraging that growth into the fall will be a very, will be, will complement, uh, everything that's been said tonight.
Without running the risk of, um, of staying on, on reinforcing this point, uh, too much, and I don't think it could be enough. But it's also what I've seen is that it's, um, the families are becoming more tech savvy now. And, you know, there are some areas of growth that will be the outcome of this. Um, and growth happens when you're uncomfortable. And although we know that the vulnerable population groups of our students are facing other challenges that we need to wrap around and support them with, that will be a challenge because you're not in the building with them every day. And it's kind of hard to gauge the temperature of the students on a daily basis as they come into the building. If there are some other social, emotional issues, family-related issues spilling into the school, then you can identify those students. So there are going to be challenges. However, there are definitely going to be growth areas. For the digital, those who are, are experiencing the digital divide in our community, this is actually an opportunity to grow the capacity in the, uh, of the community, that portion of our community with that. The other thing I was going to say is that my personal experience has shown me in terms of reaching out to parents is that some students and families which would have slipped through the cracks a little more easier, more easily when they're, um, consistently in the building with you. You're doing so much and going out of your way because you don't see them physically to contact them. And then also some parents are even more receptive now because they can't rely on problem solving, uh, within the confines of the building. Now they have to be engaged in that and they need support. Um, and that's of course for those who are engaged. You do have those who may, you know, need the extra support of being in the building. But, um, there are some, some outcomes and some growth areas that we can move the needle on. Just looking at it half full.
Yeah, I, I just want to, I think this is a really important conversation. And, um, it seems clear to me that it's a, an ongoing conversation within the building. Um, and I just, I just want to say out loud that I have a lot of trust and faith in all of you administrators and your wonderful teams and teachers and staff to look at this through an equity lens and to do that work always. Um, and I just, you know, I just want to say out loud that I, I have a lot of faith and trust in you to do that and to do it well and probably do it better than most, if not everyone. So, um, I know that's a high bar, but you guys usually, uh, set your own high bars and, and match, match that high level. So, um, thanks for all of this work because I know it's unprecedented and hard. But I think, um, it's so woven into who we are to look at things through equity that I, I do have faith that that's what you're doing and that you will, you know, you're not going to get it right every time. It's not going to be perfect, we know that. But I know that you all are, are really focused on that. So thank you for continuing what you always do so well.
Thank you for saying that. I really, um, really appreciate this entire conversation and really thinking about this. The challenges ahead of us, um, is very important. But also realizing that there are nuggets that we can hold on to. There are components that we are able to do and learn about ourselves. Rethinking our values, um, recognizing how important the work we've done already implies the work we're doing now and helps us get through this difficult time. The equity work that we've engaged in, in a district, as a district, has certainly impacted how we approach this. And Eric, I appreciate you saying right up front that all of our students have devices and they have access. But we recognize that because students are struggling at a disadvantage, our black and brown students, many of our black and brown students, may have difficulty on the other side of this. So, um, recognizing that always as we make decisions, we will move forward. We will continue to move forward with, with that, with our values solid. Our values are solid and they haven't changed. In fact, in the last few weeks, we've gotten more grounded in what's important. Because the world has shown us that we have to be. Are there other comments, Gretchen?
Just really quickly, this is a minor point by comparison to what we've been talking about, but I, I don't want to lose sight. There, there are certain to be some of our students and teachers who although might be able to benefit from coming back to the school in person, if we're able to do that in some sort of smaller setting, who are unable to do that because they have health, um, concerns. Chronic illnesses, um, they're at a high-risk group for, for whatever reason. And there's a whole bunch of things that put you at risk. And I'm, I'm wondering if you can give us just some high-level sense of what are we doing to understand, um, which of our students and how many of them fall into this kind of a group? Which of our, uh, and not just teachers, I would say, you know, any, any staff, any employee, any administrator to, to, to understand how many of those people there are, to, to juggle where they're working. And maybe this would have been better, um, if Toya were here, but maybe you can just give some sense of that.
Well, uh, first of all, but one sense of it is just bringing up the question is important. Because, uh, we really, we know that we would have many people, both adults and families of, of students, who would have many reasons that they would be fearful of coming back with, with a deadly virus that is so highly contagious. Because one of the things that, that we, we will not be able to do, and I'm sorry to say this, is guarantee that we, that, that we have done every step that will prevent, uh, any spread of, of the virus in this school. We, we know, we, we know we can't guarantee that. Not that we can't do everything within our human power to try to, to, to prevent against that. But, um, but I couldn't look anybody in the face and say, oh no, your child's safe. You send your child here because we got it all covered. Or to any employee, say, oh no, it'll be safe because, because we have everything taken care of. We can't do it. So with, 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 without having a, a, a firm, uh, answer or number for you, I will say this. We, we've seen the national polling and, and we know that, 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 that We, we've seen the national polling and, and we know that, 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 that they're predicting that as many as twenty-five percent of all teachers in the nation uh, may leave teaching uh, because of their fears of going back into these Petri dish uh, schools. We know that somewhere in the range of forty to sixty percent of all families are saying, I'm not going to send my kid when, when there's no vaccine and, 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 and there's no ongoing testing and there, there uh, is no uh, treatment that, that is a cure. So, so yeah, we know that's out there. And I think that's one of the reasons why we have to really be uh, realistic about how do we do the safest thing first? And then start addressing all of the exceptions and the equity issues and, and the, and, and, and the other things that we, that, that human beings also need. And so that's why again, I keep coming back to it, I'm leaning towards, let's start with an e-learning model. But then let's, I mean, from the, the get-go, uh, you know, start recognizing where we need to start uh, doing more in-person uh, assistance or, or contact. But it wouldn't be forty-four hundred people, uh, you know, it would, we could keep it to very manageable groups. And even, and even let, you know, so we get to phase four and it's now fifty people. We don't have to do fifty people, we can do groups of five or six. Uh, uh, you, you know, we can keep a control uh, uh, of, of spaces with lots of ventilation and not let a viral load build up in a, in a room. We can sanitize uh, when, when people leave and, and even have other sanitized rooms ready to go. Uh, so I can't get at the, the number Gretchen, but what I can get at is it's the, it's a problem. And, and, and quite frankly, uh, uh, I, I respect people who, who will have those kinds of concerns. And, and, and we have to really think hard on this.
Great, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that's.
All right. Are we ready to move on? Okay. So the next item, and well, before I move on, I just wanted to say to um, to Eric and Pete and Marcus, thank you for that information. Very helpful. Keeps us thinking and challenged. Thank you. All right.
And Board will have the same topic on your next agenda a- as well. We'll, 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 we'll just, we'll just keep it coming back.
Yeah, that's good. I appreciate that. Okay, our next item is our, is the first reading um, from our policy issue number one oh three. That is in your packet, Board. Um, so you had a chance to review that. Any questions?
I would just want to point out, uh, if I may, uh, that we're asking to fast track uh, the pandemic preparedness policy, policy four-one-eight-oh and the corresponding uh, administrative procedure that allows for grant flexibility, particularly payments of employees' salaries during a pandemic. Uh, being able to allocate those funds, uh, that requires uh, notification to the board when we're going to do that. Uh, but I just wanted the board to know that that's why for four-one-eight-oh and the corresponding administrative procedure, you see it here tonight under uh, the, in, in the uh, in, is an action item as well. The rest of press one oh three, uh, including the five-year review will be up for a vote, will be an action item at the next board meeting. Uh, but I wanted to, to highlight uh, that, that difference for you.
Thank you for that. Yes, we use the, we use the CD item and vote on it in the next meeting, but tonight we're going to vote on that one.
There's a, there's a deadline, I think, uh, statutorily and, and the, and even though board notification is required, we didn't have to have a board meeting. We could have had that notification through an email, but it just so happens we're having our meeting.
We're having our meeting. Okay. All right, we're at our finance committee meeting. So the board um, consists of, everybody on the board is on the finance committee. And um, Mary, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you. Um, thank you, Board, uh, for your kind words earlier. And hopefully we uh, won't disappoint with the plan for next year as well. So I'm going to share my screen and uh, show the slide presentation that we normally do around this time. So hopefully you'll all be able to see it. Am I ready good?
Yep.
All right. Um, so this is the presentation for the tentative fiscal twenty-twenty-one budget. And uh, we'll be coming back at the September meeting to talk about the final budget. And you know, I just want to say going into the slides that in light of everything we've talked about uh, with the pandemic, things will most likely change. And so the intent tonight is to get a start on the July one fiscal year so that the board authorizes the initial um, you know, expenditures that are necessary until we do approve the final budget at the September board meeting. So we're going to talk about a financial overview, a little bit about revenues and then expenditures. Uh, I've shortened the fund analysis tonight to just the, a couple of the major funds that we deal with. And then we'll talk a little bit about a plan and uh, the next steps for September. And then I have a, one cool slide that I want to show you that I mentioned. Um, at, at the end of the presentation, I mentioned this at the last meeting that talks about some different scenarios. And hopefully we'll have some um, better pinned down information to refine that scenario um, in September. So uh, specifically we'll talk also about the state budget, economic concerns, and then the overview. Um, the, I, I don't know the exact date. I think it was in February. The governor did propose a budget before the pandemic. And since then, the revenue estimates have been revised down, projected shortfall is in the billions. I believe it depends uh, according to the governor on whether or not that progressive income tax, the graduated income tax passes. Uh, so we'll see, we won't know that by September clearly. But right now, the budget shortfall is already projected to be very high. Uh, I always leave the items that are still on the table. Uh, property tax freeze has, has resurfaced in conversations uh, again. And pension funding, I've not really heard anything about that in a while. But since there's been no definitive answer, I like to always just kind of list it as something that's looming in the background. Uh, property tax freeze, it has been brought back up again, especially with regards to giving some relief to homeowners, given everything that's been going on now. Uh, some of you may have heard uh, about the evidence-based funding situation. Uh, just a reminder that replaced general state aid, uh, this will be the fourth year of evidence-based funding. For this year so far, the rest of the payments that were due to us in the evidence-based funding have been coming in on time. Uh, we expect that to continue for the rest of this year. So for fiscal twenty-one, so far, everything that we've heard, the state has pledged of what we would call level funding for next year, which means we as a tier four district wouldn't gain, but we also wouldn't lose. I don't think that that's a guarantee, but I think that uh, you know, since it's been put out there now, I, I don't think that it would be pulled back, but honestly, I wouldn't, uh, anything's possible at this point. But from everything that we know, that evidence-based funding, which is just under three million dollars for us, has been pledged to be level for next year. I, I'll get to what might happen down the road with that on a later slide. Uh, the other categoricals, which uh, include things like some special ed reimbursements and things, have had some lag this year. We are anticipating though, that next year those uh, may have some reductions and/or late payments. They typically do something that they call proration, which means we just, the state decides what percent they're going to pay of that reimbursement that we've received in the past. So the corporate property replacement tax is something that I've been hearing a lot about. Uh, we've always felt that it, it, it's never really a guarantee. I don't hear much talk about it in the news in general, but it has definitely been targeted as something that is uh, estimated to be reduced next year. So I've talked to a couple of people, sort of financial advisors in the industry. And I think a common reduction that districts will show is about a twenty-five percent reduction for next year. This is similar to the temporary reduction that we saw about ten years ago when we had an economic downturn. So at this point in time, with everything that we know, that's been the reduction estimate that you'll see in the budget book that you all received last week. So like I mentioned, the property tax freeze and the graduated income tax outcome, uh, those are still unknowns. Uh, the pension cost shift that we've been hearing about for a while, it would probably be phased in and it's probably coming down the road, not right away, but it could be up to two million dollars a year. Uh, the future of evidence-based funding, um, let me just, I think I have a, another uh, point on that later in the slide, but just in case I don't, let me just mention that. Um, Gretchen brought up at the last meeting um, about a potential takeback. And um, so we do know that if the state does fail to meet its minimum payment for evidence-based funding in the future, certainly tiers three and four, the districts that have a more adequate local coverage, they'll be the first ones to be affected. That does include us. And that could be um, a specific reduction in funding, it could be a takeback per pupil. Uh, they said that the first thing that would be taken back is any additional evidence-based funding that we've received since this started, since the funding started three years ago. And for us, that was only about six thousand dollars. So they, they would pull that back first. But I think if they pull that back from every district, the number was somewhere around nine million dollars that they'd recover. And we all know nine million dollars isn't going to go very far at the state level. So that's when that uh, clawback, takeback um, process could be in. I, I've not heard any more about that, so at the end, I don't, if um, anyone has heard, they can certainly weigh in. We know it's a possibility, but all I have heard at this point is that funding is level for next year and there will be more to come on the future of that. So um, the CPI, which is what determines our uh, annual increase in, in property tax levy, it's a maximum that we can levy for, that will be a blend of the twenty-nineteen levy, which was one point nine percent. And then the twenty-twenty levy, which was determined in December of twenty-nineteen, that number is two point three percent. But if there's a property tax freeze enacted, that could cancel out any property tax increases that we would see. Uh, we don't know if that will happen, uh, but we do know that the late fees have been relaxed in Cook County for homeowners who do pay their property taxes late. So the, the tentative budget overall, um, the, the proposed tentative budget is ninety point four million dollars. And that's a two point six percent increase over the fiscal twenty-twenty budget. This includes all funds, including what we call the non-operating like bond and interest capital and I M R F fund. So for the operating funds, which are the others, the ed, the um, operations and maintenance, transportation, the tentative budget is eighty-one point one million. Oh, there's a big typo there. That is a two point four percent increase. Don't panic. Two point four percent increase. I thought I caught the typo. Um, and this is a modest increase because it's not thirty-two, mainly due to the increased personnel costs from contractual obligations. Okay. All right. I did have another point, but we've already talked about it, about the evidence-based funding. Uh, again, we, we expect that to be flat for next year. The categorical state aid I mentioned earlier as well, uh, some of that was absorbed by evidence-based funding a few years ago. And the others have been mostly flat or slight decreases. We wouldn't be surprised by that proration next year. We do think the federal aid will uh, remain flat. But I did just learn about a week ago that any unused grant money, title one, title two, together, those are about four hundred thousand dollars for us. The nice thing is they will be allowing us to have up to a one hundred percent carryover of any unused funds. And typically that's only fifteen percent. So that's a, that's a big uh, allowance that we'll be definitely taking advantage of. Uh, since we know that everything couldn't be finished that was in those grants like Wild Kid Academy and some um, PD, the Avid Conference, some of those things. I've already mentioned that uh, property taxes are a blend of two-year levies. And the later payment dates we know will affect the timing and a freeze is possible. And that corporate property replacement, corporate property replacement tax is a concern and we tried to do a conservative budget. Not much I really wanted to say about EAVs. We know that they've been uh, increasing, but have yet to get quite back to where they were before they took a dive back in twenty-ten. But the assessor has announced a total reassessment of Cook County, commercial and residential, which is an important step uh, for people who felt that their properties were assessed. We heard that the commercial assessments were really high. But I just want to point out that the district does levy for an amount. So uh, the reassessment by the Cook County Assessor does not have a, a, a direct effect on us because our tax levy is an amount. It may, it may be affected by what portion is commercial or residential, but that's, that's about the extent of it. I just wanted to touch briefly on student fees. We will have no increase to student fees this year. There's a parking increase of fifty dollars per year that the board approved a few years ago. Um, it was a, a, a two-year, uh, two out of four-year parking increase. We were substantially below anyone in the area. So fees went from, I think it was two hundred to two fifty, and then there was no increase the following year. And then a planned increase of two fifty to three hundred. So we think it's modest. We do have a high demand for parking. And um, we felt like we just needed to raise that a little bit to help with maintenance of the lots. Uh, the summer school fees were raised back in the summer of twenty-seventeen. We don't have a planned increase. We did not have a planned increase for this year, for the summer. Just as a reminder, these numbers only change by a percentage or two every year. Uh, property taxes are by far, far biggest source of revenue. And that's eighty-four percent. And then the other local revenues make up another five percent. So uh, by far, that's what we depend on the most. As always, uh, we do talk to you about values-based budgeting and maintaining uh, our reduced levels. I think we've done a good job at holding the line on contractual services and supplies and materials. Uh, we do have retirements every year that do help us with uh, the salary numbers. So even though there are contractual increases, the retirements do help us pick up a little bit of savings. And uh, I, I have to give credit to those who were involved in the, what's called the sectioning process this year. I know Scott and Marcus are a big part of that. They, they really held the line when Eric said, you know, we're not planning for any personnel increases unless absolutely necessary for things like special ed, um, paraprofessionals, one-on-one, one-to-one aides. So they really held the line and I think that came up in the overall increases uh, as far as salary and, and the education fund numbers. So when we look at expenses, the salaries are almost seventy percent of the budget. And when you add that with fringe benefits, you come to seventy-eight percent. Uh, and then our purchase services are another nine percent. So those are really the, the largest chunks of our categories of expenses. So salaries overall are increasing about three point nine percent uh, due to employment contracts. Uh, we, we have stable employee accounts, as I mentioned, like we didn't have any significant uh, increases unless something was absolutely necessary like the paraprofessional. But, but because we have that continued trend of higher enrollment, we have added some positions the last few years. And so we're continuing to support those. And um, the, the contractual increases for our certified staff do usually include a step as well as a cost of living. Uh, we're in the fourth year of a four-year contract for the teachers. And so typically um, that cost of living increase is usually the highest towards the end of a contract. And that is based on the CPI. So I, I believe in the upcoming year, this, the um, teacher's contract was uh, to receive a hundred percent of the CPI in addition to their step. And that started out lower in the, earlier in the contract. Uh, fringe benefits are increasing by three percent. We think that's uh, realistic in, given the times. We're going to keep an eye on that for next year because I've heard lots of different things about what will happen to healthcare costs based on everything that we've seen. Uh, supplies and materials are increasing by two point four percent and purchase services are increasing by one point five. Those are two areas that we go to first when we need to look at cuts. And so we've really um, really held the line and, and encouraged our academic and our administrative departments to really try to keep those numbers as low as possible. Uh, the capital outlay, that's not what's covered in the capital improvements fund, but the capital outlay, for example, like in the operations or education fund decreased just slightly. And it does fluctuate from year to year depending on need. Uh, the tuition that we pay out is expected to remain flat next year. As you know, uh, the public day school opened last year, so our tuition expenses did drop um, coming from the year before into this year that we're finishing. And so we do expect them to remain flat. So just a couple of slides on the, the larger funds that we have. The education fund, um, the proposed budget is seventy-one point five million, which I was really happy with the two point four percent increase. I think um, based on everything that goes into the education fund and the fact that that's where our largest um, our largest group of um, contractual, you know, employees who are, are served with a um, our largest group of um, contractual, you know, employees who are, are served with a contract are in the education fund. And so 2.4% increase, I think is a modest one. Um, and, and we do benefit from those retirements, as I mentioned before. The operations and maintenance fund is our next largest fund. And that tentative budget is just under 8 million, 7.98, and that's a 2.1% increase overall. Uh, primarily contractual salary and some increased cost of supplies. As always, our um, instruction is top priority, which is why we look to those other areas when we start needing to talk about cuts. Uh, the district has always tried to maintain a reasonable student-teacher ratio and avoid personnel layoffs wherever possible. So financial strategies going forward, of course, monitoring the state's financial condition, revenues and expenses. We always look to uh, get the most bang for our buck out of our capital costs. Um, those are usually approved by the board in the fall. Will continue to engage in our wellness strategies, our wellness classes for healthcare cost containment and as part of our um, agreement to keep our healthcare costs low. And planned reorganizations based on analysis, especially in light of funding that we know might be in jeopardy. So if the state does in, initiate some sort of evidence-based funding take back um, or enacts a property tax freeze or any kind of shift in pension costs, uh, I think those things are probably likely to happen in those order that I haven't listed there, but that's just my opinion. So if any of those things happen, we'd be looking at um, further reductions, kind of our plan B scenario. I'll show you a couple of scenarios in a minute. And um, you know, worst-case scenarios typically when we would talk about personnel uh, reductions, but uh, we just, that's always kind of in the back pocket, like you could say. So July 30th, that should read July 30th or August 6th, we'll be publishing that budget hearing notice for the final budget hearing, which if I calculated correctly, I wasn't looking at the board date listing, but I'm, I'm pretty sure I got it right. It's September 14th. Uh, we'll conduct the budget hearing. We'll do a property tax information update, a state update. And then we'll have adjusted revenues in that final budget if needed. And that document will be balanced. We'll do the uh, tax update and any final adjustments from the tentative numbers that we presented to you this time. And that also will always include our final three sections, the financial analysis, operational, and then a statistical section. So before we get to questions, I'm going to flip my screen over if I haven't timed out. Because I want to show you a quick projection that I had been working on with our um, Forecast Five software representative. This is a software that we use along with most of my other district counterparts. We actually meet on financial, um. You know, we need to compare stories, but we also have meetings on this software because we all use it so much. So this was a nice presentation that they were providing to districts. We had to work on it together and develop, I'll flip over real quick to one other thing. Um, first, we developed kind of an assumption change spreadsheet based on if COVID-19 had never happened. And then if we have a quick recovery, a medium recovery, a slow recovery, and then worst-case scenario. And so we looked at all kinds of things in the revenues that could change, like our property tax collection rate, what the um, new property would be in Evanston, what the corporate property uh, replacement tax might be. And so we went from if this had never happened to, okay, we'll bounce back quickly, not so quickly, and then worst case. And so here's what comes out of that. And so this is um, a chart of what our estimated end of, I'm sorry, Gretchen, are you trying to wave to get my attention?
I, are we supposed to be seeing something?
Yeah, you guys don't see my screen?
No, we don't. We see a screen that says questions.
You have to end that share, Mary.
Thank you, Marcus. Got it. Okay. So let me share something else. Thank you for stopping me. So this was the spreadsheet I was just referring to. Can you guys see that? Couple nods? Okay, thank you. So we, we had to do some project, and then I'll stop sharing this and get to the one more quick slide. So we did some projections with Forecast Five, our software um, company and our dedicated rep to talk about, okay, if, if things hadn't happened, what if we recover quickly? And so you can see there's everything from property tax collection rates to uh, reductions in revenues. And they get progressively worse as you go across the spreadsheet. So from that, we were able to graph this really cool sheet. And I got the hang of this now. All right. Can you see that? Okay, yes. All right. So this is um, just a graph of fund balance. So I just want to remind everyone, you know, we often get questioned about why do we have so much money in fund balance? And the board does have a policy um, that fund balance, you know, we, we like to aim for it to be around 33 to 40% of the overall budget. It's important now, especially, we talked about this a little bit in May, I think, about if, you know, property tax payments are delayed, it's important to have some money in the bank. And so we also have a, a, a financial policy set by the board that if that fund balance does get too high, we transfer that into much-needed capital projects. So if, if you remember that spreadsheet that I just showed you quickly, it had five scenarios. You can see them here. Pre-COVID is orange, quick recovery is gray, medium recovery is green, and then you go down to slow and worst-case in blue and purple. So to the left, I'm sorry, yeah, to the left, you'll see our fund balance. And it, for these, primarily our operating funds, education, ONM, transportation, IMRF, doesn't include capital, uh, doesn't include bond and interest fund. You can see that we were um, you know, pre-COVID, where all the lines meet at the uh, at 2020, we're right about 30, let's say 37 million, 38 million. And so depending on how the expenses track out, if COVID had never happened, we'd be expecting as we get to those next couple of out-years to be at about 36 million in fund balance. If we do experience a quick recovery and corporate property replacement tax doesn't suffer, property tax collections don't suffer too much, we would expect to end that three-year period pretty close, you know, a million dollars less overall. But you can see then in the medium recovery, the green, um, that would drop a little bit more. And then we, we don't think that a worst-case scenario would ever be likely. Uh, because you would try to head off as much, that would be a dire situation and you try to head it off in these earlier times where things are just starting to take a dive. So we really, this is a, a scenario that many of the districts are looking at, that I come into contact with. And so we can kind of see how uh, the scenarios start to shape out as we get into this coming fiscal year. And so this will be a tool that we'll keep refining as soon as we start knowing how things will be changing. And so we'll be continuing to track this financial information in five potential scenarios. So I will stop sharing that.
Mary, can you um, uh, that first slide that you shared went by really quick. Can you?
The chart?
Yeah. Could you pop that one back up? And then would it be possible to get um, copies of both of those and, and, and make sure that we add them into the board packet as well?
Sure.
Um, but maybe you can just send us those.
So there's the grid. You guys see that, right?
Yes.
So really what we are concentrating on were the revenue assumptions on the left. And you have a CPI that you can see kind of in the pre-COVID scenario. It usually averages out long-term to 2%, but you can see in some of these slower recoveries, you'd have a lower CPI. People have been talking about what if there's a zero, what if there's a negative? And then um, so that imitates some of these scenarios. You might have to move around the little picture box to see uh, some of that spreadsheet. But we have some zero CPIs and some of the slower recoveries. And then uh, property tax collection rate, those are usually pretty resilient for us. But in a worst case, those collection rates would drop potentially due to some foreclosures, late payments. Um, new property, you know, if that typically slows down and, and the city building permits and new property don't recover as quickly. Uh, the CPPRT revenue, uh, this is the likely scenario, we think probably 25% down. And would it continue to decline in future years? Um, that's probably the biggest piece. Interest, we know that interest is going to be down. But the good news is interest was higher than we expected this year. So we didn't have to cut our budget by quite as much because we're basing the reduction on what actually came in for interest. So that was helpful. And then state sources, we know about those prorations and things. So depending on how quickly that goes south and how quickly it recovers. Uh, federal, we think is probably pretty resilient, but uh, we do have some potential reductions in the more difficult scenarios.
So Mary, um, I, I don't know if I'm, this isn't my area of expertise. I, I do rely on you um, for your expertise. But it seems to me the talk has been, there has been a lot of talk about uh, a zero or negative CPI. And this, this modeling seems to, although it pops up a, a tiny little bit, it's not really there in a, in a very significant way. And then similarly, I would say that the property tax collection rate, even in the worst-case scenario, seems pretty optimistic. Um, and, and then the CPPRT revenue also strikes me, even in the worst-case scenario, is being fairly optimistic. So I don't know if I'm just kind of a glass, I mean, I'm trying to be a glass half-full person rather than a glass half-empty, but I don't know. The, I, I think even though this is describing worst, slow, medium, quick recovery, it, it still seems to me to, to have a bias towards optimism. And maybe that's appropriate and maybe we should all be enthusiastic about that, but I, I don't know.
So, so let me say that if you look, for example, at CPPRT, everything I'm hearing, a, and I will say that to uh, our dedicated rep at Forecast Five was the long-term uh, CFO at the Lake Forest School Districts and before that Naperville. So I really picked his brain a lot on this and also what happened 10 years ago with the economic downturn. So he, as well as the uh, former CFO at Highland Park Deerfield, they were longtime, you know, CFO, business manager people. And our North Shore group has really collaborated on what do we know, what do we think we know, what has happened historically? And I will tell you that we had a, a long conversation about CPPRT. Um, and in, so in the worst-case scenario, you see it being reduced and not coming back up until like year five. And, and that's really not something that's ever been seen for it to be that slow to recover. So I would say that these are pretty big hits. And I don't really consider them optimistic. I'm not saying it couldn't get worse, that we find out that it'll continue to drop. But these are basically um, not having that large income stream really kick back up for us for a while. Um, the uh, interest, for example, in some of these, we have it being reduced 50% and really not even coming back up in five years. I think historically, we've seen things recover at least somewhat. And um, you know, same thing with the state revenues and some of these out-years. Uh, they, they don't increase quickly if at all. Um, and I would say, I think the last thing I would probably say is that the property tax collection um, has all, I shouldn't say always, but it has really hovered right around 98%. And um, you know, even when properties go into foreclosure, the reality is that banks typically continue to make those payments. And so I don't know if there's been a, a time in this area. In fact, I even had that discussion with our rep. His name is Alan. He was the, the Lake Forest person that I mentioned. He said, you know, you've got some of these estimates at 96% collection rate. He said, I, I really think that might be too low. And so I, I'm trying to rely on people that I consider well-seasoned in my field and certainly, you know, with number of years of experience in that position, more like a Bill Stafford. Um, so it, is it for sure? No. But I think what's nice about a five-year projection is most of these scenarios are really similar in year one, because we don't know everything. And I think that it's always been crucial as we talk about multiple years to really think about um, changing things as you go if situations are bad. A, and so it's not, we don't wake up and we're in year five. So I think that would be the only thing that I'd say is that it's kind of a, a, a progression, if you will. And if um, if one of these scenarios starts to seem to play out more than another, we make adjustments as we go. So I, I mean, I don't.
I think that's, I, I mean, I think that's very helpful. I really appreciate this because I think it's the kind of thing we ought to be checking in on um, on a very regular basis. Not just a year from now, but um, I, I think we're going to have to keep looking at this. I, I really do think the situation is totally different than the 2008 financial crisis. It's way worse. So I, I don't think, you know, I think we have to be careful. But you guys are the experts and I really appreciate you sharing. Yes, thank you.
I'll keep refining it and I'll um, that one, as you saw, is in an interactive software. Also, I'll try to figure out how to get it to a nice piece of, you know, output so that I can share it with you all. And uh, it definitely is a, an, an ongoing analysis that, trust me, I mean, I think it's my duty and I would probably say my job depends on keeping up on, you know, how this progresses. So. But, but point taken, Gretchen. I, I agree. It's, I, I mean, I try, I, I try to be, I try not to be um, an, an alarmist or, or whatever the right word is. But uh, but I certainly don't want to be too um, too glass half-full because I don't want to get this wrong.
It's a lot depending on it. We're all depending.
Sorry, that took a long time, but you guys are, are used to talking to me at 10 o'clock at night anyway, so. But I'm done unless there's other questions.
All right. Are there other questions? That was really great, Mary. And I, I agree. I would, I would love those, those last two, those last two slides. That'd be great.
They were a lot of work, so I'm glad you guys liked them.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, I guess I only know those slides are going to change as you continue to keep your eyes on this. So um, I just appreciate that, that you are doing that and taking this um, you know, thinking about this constantly because it is, it's, it's evolving and it's changing every time you turn around. So I think it's great. Thank you.
I have to, I have to say, I saw that chart as a sample to uh, like a webinar that Forecast Five had done that for whatever reason I had missed. And so Alan, our rep, uh, was telling me about it and he shared the presentation with me. I was like, that's really cool. How do I get one of those? He was like, well, it's a lot of work. You want to put it in? So I would say we probably met for probably six hours as this whole thing started, you know, through the first round of Zoom meetings that I probably had participated in. And we refined, he, he gave me homework. He, you know, first we do the spreadsheet, Monique, to your question. You know, you, you do that spreadsheet and sort of think about what does it look like? And it was hard for me to actually fill in the what if COVID-19 had never happened? Because I'm already thinking, well, interest is down or this is that, you know? He's like, no, no, you gotta, this is your pre-COVID. So yeah, I'm happy to share any information I can and um, I, I thought it was worth doing for sure. Jude's so bored, he moved to a whole different place. I'm kidding.
Gotta keep it interesting.
It's a long, I'm ready to move, dude. I'm just teasing you, dude.
Thank you, Mary. Great job.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on. We're in our action items now. So the first action item is the approval of the tentative fiscal year 2021 budget. Can we have a motion, please?
No, moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
LaDai.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Monzel.
Yes.
Parsons.
Yes.
Rolowitz.
Yes.
DeTarrich.
Yes.
Savage Williams.
Yes, thank you. The next item is approval of IASB membership. Illinois Association of School Board.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Livingston.
Yes.
Monzel.
Yes.
Parsons.
Yes.
Rolowitz.
Yes.
DeTarrich.
Yes.
LaDai.
Yes.
Savage Williams.
Yes. The next item is the item that um, Dr. Beavis mentioned, the approval of policy number four uh, point one. The next item is the item that Dr. Beavis mentioned, the approval of policy number 4.180, the pandemic preparedness, and 4.180 AP3, grant flexibility, payment of employee salaries during a pandemic.
So moved.
Second.
Take your pick, Lisa.
All right. Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Monzel.
Yes.
Parsons.
Yes.
Rolowitz.
Yes.
DeTarrich.
Yes.
LaDai.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Savage Williams.
Yes. Okay, next is the consent agenda, which consists of approval of agreement to furnish food service to District 65, approval of theater lighting fixtures and electrical work, approval of athletic and field trip student transportation contract, approval of minutes from May 11, 2020, closed session meeting, May 11, 2020, regular meeting, treasurer's report from April 2020, approval of bills, personnel agenda, appointments to staff administrator, certified support staff, summer school, and interns, change in status, request for full-time certified leave of absence maternity, administrator certified, resignation exempt, release, support staff, SOWI approvals, administrators, administrator exempt. And we had an addendum. Yeah, the addendum, appointments to staff exempt and leave of absence paternity certified.
Second.
I have a question before we do the roll call.
Okay. Yes.
All right. I wanted to get that in before we started the voting. Just, just a couple of quick questions on those contracts. Mary, are you still there?
Yeah.
So the, the bus contract, it appeared to me that we only pay if the buses get used. So in other words, if we're not using these things in the fall because of the pandemic, we're okay, right?
Yes, that's correct.
And then same thing on the lunch contract with District 65. I know we're also providing these meals, but how does that work if we are not doing lunch? Or at least maybe not the usual lunch? How, how is that happening?
I, I, I would say, I mean, it's great that we do have a great relationship between the two districts because if you think about it, the contract was in place this spring. And we both sort of agreed to kind of nullify it because we went to that plan with the city. And the city is actually filing for the federal meals on, you know, what's been going on through the end of the school year. So I think that that's exactly what we would go back to if that serves the community best. And so the nice thing is no one got into any discussions about, well, wait this, but wait that. It was really coming together as a community. I, I'm not sure if you guys all know the details, but District 65 rented the trucks because they're better at distribution because they do that every day. And so it really was a combined effort, and I think that the plan would be to go right back to that. I think if it was any other agreement, we might have felt like there needed to be some contingency wording and, you know, certainly that has all worked out really well for all of us this spring, so.
That sounds generally fine, and I'm certainly glad that it worked out with District 65. I just wonder if, if this kind of thing happens in the fall, whether there at least should be some sort of side letter or clarity. I, you know, I, I mean, just to put it out there, District 65's financial circumstances are a little different than ours. And I don't want to get caught in a difficult circumstance where we're trying to feed our kids, which is the actual priority, and, and we're tangled up in something. So I just, I, you know, I will.
That's a great point.
Warrant the contract, but I, the lawyer in me says, hey, we need to be careful in these kinds of circumstances. So that's all I'd say.
Okay. I was actually, as you were saying that, I was thinking about our legal counsel, which we do share. We have the same legal counsel, 65. So I was thinking to your point, if it looks like things are not going to be business as usual, then we'll just draft up some sort of agreement using our shared legal counsel. So thank you for that. I had, had not thought to put that into words, but that's a really good point. Appreciate it.
And then on the, my last question on the contract, the auditorium situation. And I know that the foundation is sharing the funding of that, but it was unclear. It was $400,000 guaranteed from the foundation. So does that mean they are covering the work that's part of this contract, the electric and the other piece? It was all the.
Sorry, that was the last memo I wrote, and it was the day that the fraud happened. So I was like, I know. So I apologize if it wasn't clear. The intent was not to say that the foundation was covering this specific part of the purchase. But that said, they have already given that gift to the district. So it, you know, however you want to slice it, the money is already there from them, and it's already in our capital plan. So it was not meant to correlate those two things, but it depends on how you want to look at it. Thank you.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second. So can we have a roll call, please?
Parsons.
Yes.
Rolowitz.
Yes.
DeTarrich.
Yes.
LaDai.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Monzel.
Yeah.
Savage Williams.
Yes. Okay, thank you. All right. So the next item on the agenda is old and new business. Is there any old or new business that someone would like to bring up?
Well, Pat, I wanted to say something. I don't know if it's new business or if it belongs in the polling, so I'll leave it to you to, I just wanted to say.
It belongs in, I think it's old business, to be honest.
Well, that's true.
Yes.
So I just, I just wanted to say, and I'm sure I'm joined by the rest of the board, that we are all so deeply angry and upset by the murder of George Floyd and so many others, and the racism that's plagued this country, really since from before we were even a country. And I'm painfully reminded that, especially as a white person, that we, and I particularly, have to do much more and much better. But I do have to say I'm very grateful to ETHS because you give me hope. The leadership you've shown, the work that you've done, and the culture and tone that you have set for a long time, not just recently, but for years, has only grown and deepened. And the march and rally that we saw last Sunday that culminated in the Dodge parking lot of the high school, as well as the community cleanup of white supremacy and predominantly white North Evanston that happened this Saturday, were both organized by ETHS grads, who are now in their late teens and through their mid-20s. And these are just a couple of examples of the results of your leadership and intentional efforts. ETH, ETHS on your watch has supported and nurtured and given room, voice, and a sense of power to young people who organize these events. You gave these young people and so many others the tools, the vocabulary, the experiences that helped them live out anti-racism. And as awful as this time is, it really is ETHS and the work being done here and the young people learning in this culture that you have intentionally created that gives me hope. As many of those young people are now out in the world doing the work started here, started at ETHS. And they give me hope that this won't just be a moment in history, but actually a turning point. So I just wanted to say thank you, and I'm so honored and humbled to be in any way connected to this great school and to this great work and to all of you because really you are doing the work that will, God willing, solve some of the problems of the world. And, and you're putting kids out there and now adults who really have, have so much to, to bring, to, to bear on, and truly bringing us through some very, very difficult times. So thank you so much.
Thank you for those words, Pat. Deeply appreciated. Anybody else on the board? Gretchen, thank you for your reaction.
Those are very white hands clapping.
Wasn't gonna say that. All right, polling of the board. Does anybody have anything else you'd like to add? If not, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I'm, and I'll second it. I just really want to say I hope everybody stays safe and well, and I miss all of you guys.
Yes. So do I. This meeting is adjourned. Take care of yourselves, all of you.
Thanks, everyone.
Bye.